The time is 7:07 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Remember that the meetings of the board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The board does receive the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive questions to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item. But as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And could we all take a moment of silence, please? Each month, Public Communications will provide the superintendent's executive assistant with the script. Do we have any commendations and recognitions?
We do. Good evening, everyone. UMBLE ISD is fortunate to have some of the very best teachers in the world. Tonight's inspiring moments takes us into the classrooms of two superstars. Francesca Rathke, who teaches first grade at Whispering Pines Elementary School, and Joe Penites, who teaches robotics and automation at the CATE Center.
The winner of the trip to Florida and UMBLE ISD's Elementary Teacher of the Year is Francesca Rathke.
I feel very flattered by such an amazing opportunity, but mostly just humbled and more driven to serve my kids even more than I do now. My kids are everything to me. That campus means more to me than I could possibly put into words, and I'm just happy to serve them and love those kids even more than I already do. After my first year of teaching, which was a total whirlwind, I wanted to take the time to create relationships with my students and create lasting relationships with my students. So that means that you're still my student when you go to second grade, when you go to third grade. And being at the same campus now for the last six years, I feel that this entire campus are my children.
She's the best and really, really, really nice and always listens to us.
My favorite thing about Ms. Rathke is that she reads to us in like different voices.
Hi, my name is Alice and I'm a fairy. I'm not a permanent fairy, I'm just a temporary fairy.
She cares for other people.
My favorite thing about Ms. Rathke is love.
I really want to spread the message on how important it is to love your kids. I think that if every teacher could take the time to make those relationships and love their students, that everything else that feels hard in education would fall into place.
Thank you, Ms. Rathke.
Okay, here we go. The winner of the $10,000 cash prize from Robin Chevrolet and UMBLE ISD Secondary and District Teacher of the Year is Joe Penites.
At first, it was just a, it was real slow motion, like, did this even really happen? And then it kind of just, after that, it exploded into reality. It was enormous success. I was thinking, also, I thought about my students. I thought about all the crazy things that we had done, all the wild places that we have been, and it was a huge success for my kids. That was another big part of what I was feeling. Oh!
We've been practicing all year at some really cool things. We've been practicing at rocket tubes, been practicing building rockets.
It's a really fun activity. You can learn a lot from it, and if you have Mr. P. as an engineering teacher, it's great.
Mr. P. opened my eyes to many things. He's a very adventurous person, and he presses his adventures upon us as students to try and open our eyes and broaden our horizons.
If we just stick to what we know, if we stick to what's working, that's got a timestamp on it because it worked for yesterday. It worked for five years ago, it worked for 10 years ago. Taking risks means that we're moving towards the future, and we're trying to anticipate what kids need ahead of time. And that requires risk. And is it worth it? Yeah, absolutely. So the opposite side of not taking risks is just, it's actually more risky.
We are honored to have Francesca here with us tonight. Our community supports teachers like no other community. Ms. Rathke was awarded a vacation in a luxury Florida home donated by Kathleen Monahan. She also received two first-class tickets from United Airlines and recently used those tickets to fly to Canada. Joe Penites could not be here with us tonight due to another commitment. I'm very proud to share also that Joe has advanced as a finalist in the Region Four Teacher of the Year contest. Joe was selected from among 85 outstanding teachers representing districts throughout Region Four. The Region Four Teacher of the Year will be announced on August 7th, so good luck to Joe Penites on that. So congratulations to both them and Francesca. All right. We are still on summer break for superstaffers, and those will return in October. Next, our students compete and succeed at the highest levels, and some even become state champions. Jana Williams, Assistant Athletic Director, is now going to come to the podium to recognize state champions in track.
Guest, on behalf of the athletic department, I want to thank each of you for allowing us to be here this evening. It is with great pride that I recognize our Summer Creek and Kingwood Park track state athlete champions and coaches. As we call your name, I would like for the athletes to come up, and then we'll invite their family and coaches up after. Our first state champion is Tiana Randall from Summer Creek High School. Tiana holds a school record in the 100 meters, 400 meter relay, and 800 meter relay. She qualified for state her junior and senior year. Her senior year this past year, Tiana was a state champion in the 100 meters with a time of 11.51. Her time of 11.31 at regionals was the fastest time in the state of Texas for girls. She finished second in the 400 meter relay with a time of 45.24, which is the eighth fastest time ever in the state of Texas. That time is also the 18th fastest time ever in high school for girls. Last month, Tiana was the 100 meter champion at the Adidas Boost Games. To give you an idea of the level of competition at the Adidas Boost Games, this event has hosted several Olympic track and field athletes in the past, including the 400 meter world record holder and Rio, Olympic Rio gold medalist in 2017. She's not only competing, she's winning at that level. Tiana will be attending UNLV in the fall and has plans of being a future Olympian. I like your chances. I want to ask our coaches to come step forward. Congratulations to Coach Elton Irvin. Thank you for your guidance, support, and leadership. And our new coach is here tonight to support Tiana, Coach Franchelle Davis, our new Summer Creek head girls' track coach. Summer Creek Principal Brent McDonald, won't you come up, please? And Tiana's family, I want to take a moment to congratulate each of you and thank you for your support and guidance and love. You're a big part of this success as well, so congratulations. And at this time, Tiana's family, Tremaine Randall, Theta Randall, if y'all would come up, Trace Randall, Tinsley Randall, Hattie Randall, Janelle Davis, London Davis, Alicia Norman, Caleb Jolavet, and Sydney Jolavet. Again, congratulations to Tiana's family. Again, congratulations, Tiana, on your state championship. Thank you for representing yourself, your family, and our entire UMBLE ISD community. We're extremely proud of you. The University Interscholastic League voted in 2013 to add a wheelchair division to the state track meet and held three events at the state meet in 2014 for boys and girls, which include the shot put, the 100, and 400 meters. Any high school student may be eligible to participate in the wheelchair division and track and field events with a documented physical disability. High school students eligible under the UIL Constitution and Contest Rules are eligible to compete. Jacob is a member of the Kingwood Park High School track team and is held to the same standards, follows the same guidelines and rules and regulations as all UIL high school track athletes in the state of Texas, but he competes in a wheelchair. And he's done extremely well. He's qualified for state three years in a row. His freshman year, he was third in the 100 meters, fourth in the 400 meters, and eighth in shot. His sophomore year, he was first in the 100 meters, second in the 400 meters, and fourth in shot. And then his junior year, back-to-back state champion in the 100 meters, second in the 400 meters, and third in shot. He also competes at the highest level. He's an All-American Para Track and Field Team member in 2018 and 2019, and a member of the Team USA Junior World Team this year. He's about to leave in August to travel to Switzerland to compete for the Worlds. Jacob is a junior national, Jacob is a junior national 100 meter and shot put weightlifting gold medalist, again, a future Olympian before us today. Congratulations, Jacob, on your accomplishments. And at this time, I would like to invite his coaches and his family up. K. Park, or Kingwood Park Head Track Coach, Chris Elliott. Again, congratulations, Coach Elliott, on your leadership and mentoring for Jacob and your guidance. And Jacob's Para Track Coach, Sal Mendoza. Again, congratulations to you as well. Kingwood Park Principals are here to support Jacob tonight, Lisa Drabing and Wes Solomon. If you guys could come up. And Jacob's family, again, I want to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Allen on your success and your
We also have state champions in music. I would like to invite Dustin Winsom, Assistant Director of Fine Arts, up to the podium to
guidance that you've provided to lead Jacob to this level.
introduce UMBLE ISD students who were named outstanding performers at the Texas State
Sheila Allen and David Allen, again, congratulations, and if you would come forward.
Solo and Ensemble Contest this summer.
Good evening, Dr. Fagan, School Board.
Again, Jacob, we want to wish you the best of luck in the future, and thank you for
Thank you for having us here tonight.
representing yourself, Kingwood Park High School, and our entire UMBLE ISD community
My name is Dustin Winson. I am the Assistant Director of Fine Arts. With me is Jenny Alges.
in such an exemplary manner.
She is the Coordinator of Performing Arts for UMBLE ISD.
Congratulations.
This evening, we are extremely honored to introduce Colin Cato, who is the Director of Orchestras at Atascocita High School. During his tenure at Atascocita High School, he has created a culture of student success that's respected all across the state of Texas. He's here tonight to recognize three orchestra students for their outstanding individual achievement at the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. Colin.
Good evening, and thank you for being here with us tonight. UMBLE ISD has three students, Bailey Conroy, Ailee Congosnami, and Kirsten Karmihan, that were recently awarded the distinguished honor of being selected as an outstanding performer at the University Interscholastic League's Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. This event is held each year at the University of Texas at Austin over the course of three days. Approximately 100,000 students from throughout the state compete at regional contests, and then from there, roughly 25,000 then move on to the state event. Students that are selected to the state event then perform for high-profile music educators from across the state, as well as collegiate faculty members. Then at the end of their performance, they receive a critique along with a rating, and then at the end of the contest, the top 2% of performers are provided with the medal, notating their success as an outstanding performer. So at this time, we'd like to have our three students come forward. Rising Senior Cellist Bailey Conroy. Rising Junior Cellist Ailee Congosnami. And Rising Junior Harpist Kirsten Karmihan. The medal that these students receive is the same that's presented to all state champions in all UIL events, so it's a wonderful achievement for these three young ladies. So thank you and congratulations, girls. And then parents, at this time, if you're here with them, you're able to come forward as well.
Ready? One, two, three. All right. Here, y'all gonna take a few like this, and then we'll give you actually ensemble. Is that okay? Don't get this, okay? All right. All right, ready? All right. The other two kids. Where were you ready? There we go. All right. One, two, three. All right. That was 20 photos in a little second. And...
Thank you. And we're not done yet. Excellence is what we aim for in every single department. Jerry Byrd, our Director of Transportation, has some exciting news to share also. I'd like to welcome JP Byrd.
Good evening, Madam President, Board, Cabinet, Community, welcome. I want to start off tonight with a funny little thing about a locked Honda Accord at Kingwood High School. Oh, the services we provide. No, it's my pleasure tonight to announce for the fifth consecutive year, UMBLE ISD Transportation has been recognized amongst the top 100 fleets in the Americas. Thank you. We may have slipped a little. We recognize as number 33 out of 38,000 eligible government fleets. That includes cities, counties, states, and school district. Each year, these top 100 fleets are chosen based on key performance measurements, work progress, evidence of high trust culture, implementation of new programs, and constant improvement, amongst other factors. But tonight's ceremony, really, please allow me to recognize Mr. Jovan Jackson and Ben Lidle, technicians who excelled in the Texas Best, oh, sorry. Two of our technicians that excelled in the Texas Best Skills Competition held this past week in Waco. Jovan and Ben placed second and third respectively out of the top 50 technicians in the state of Texas. We're very honored to have them on our team, and we can only say their service and commitment helps promote us in our top 100 ranking, so thank you, gentlemen. Lastly, it's in my honor to present the board with our latest and greatest banner. Go ahead. There we go. Displaying our recognition for 2019. I think next year, we're gonna have to start hyphenating. We're running out of room.
All right, it's time for the game.
Congratulations.
And well done on the...
How are you?
Good to see you.
Thanks for being here so much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our commendations and recognitions. Okay. Next on our agenda would be questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. I do not believe we have any tonight. Now we come to comments by individual board members, and I will start with Ms. Conrad.
Thank you, Madam President. My light's green, but I don't, can y'all hear me? It doesn't sound different. Oh, well, I didn't have anything of importance, really, to say anyway. I did want to just start by congratulating all of our thermofool graduates from last night. Always liked such a challenge for a lot of them, and it's really good to see them meet their goals and move on to the next phase in their lives. Congratulations to our Transportation Department, Ben Jovan representing us well in the competitions. Our state champions, we look forward to watching what comes next for them. I know state orchestra is really, Texas is just competitive anyway, so to reach the state level, much less become state champion or in the top 10.
Congratulations to all of them, and thank you for representing us well. And for Teachers of the Year, congratulations once again. I really appreciate Francesca's pictures through Twitter, so I'm glad to get her to go along the trip with her. And we'll have to at least say something about the updated boardroom.
This is just what it's supposed to be, isn't it? So thank y'all for all your hard work in putting this together, and I guess we're not working out the bugs this evening. Everything looks fantastic. The last thing I wanted to just say was just our board members here, I want to thank everyone just for their commitment.
And we're not done yet. Excellence is what we aim for in every single department. Jerry Byrd, our Director of Transportation, has some exciting news to share also. I'd like to welcome JP Byrd.
Good evening, Madam President, Board, Cabinet, Community. Welcome. Want to start off tonight with a funny little thing about a locked Honda Accord at Kingwood High School. Oh, the services we provide. No, it's my pleasure tonight to announce for the fifth consecutive year, UMBLISD Transportation has been recognized amongst the top 100 fleets in the Americas. Thank you. We may have slipped a little. We recognize as number 33 out of 38,000 eligible government fleets. That includes cities, counties, states, and school district. Each year, these top 100 fleets are chosen based on key performance measurements, work progress, evidence of high trust culture, implementation of new programs, and constant improvement amongst other factors. But tonight's ceremony really, please allow me to recognize Mr. Jovan Jackson and Ben Lidle, technicians who excelled in the Texas Best-- two of our technicians that excelled in the Texas Best Skills Competition held this past week in Waco. Jovan and Ben placed second and third respectively out of the top 50 technicians in the state of Texas. We're very honored to have them on our team, and we can only say their service and commitment helps promote us in our top 100 ranking. So, thank you, gentlemen. Lastly, it's in my honor to present the board with our latest and greatest banner-- there we go-- displaying our recognition for 2019. I think next year, we're going to have to start hyphenating. We're running out of room.
And that concludes our accommodations and recognitions. Okay. Next on our agenda would be questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. I do not believe we have any tonight. Now, we come to comments by individual board members, and I will start with Ms. Conrad.
Thank you, Madam President. My light's green, but I don't-- can y'all hear me? It doesn't sound different. Oh, well, I didn't have anything of importance, really, to say. I did want to just start by congratulating all of our summer school graduates from last night. Always liked-- such a challenge for a lot of them. And it's really good to see them meet their goals and move on to the next phase in their lives. Congratulations to our Transportation Department, Ben and Jovan representing us well in the competitions. Our state champions. We look forward to watching what comes next for them. I know state orchestra is really-- Texas is just competitive anyway. So, to reach the state level, much less become state champion or in the top 10-- so, congratulations to all of them. Thank you for representing us well. And our Teachers of the Year. Congratulations once again. I really appreciate Francesca's pictures through Twitter. So, I'm happy to go along the trip with her. And we'll have to at least say something about the updated boardroom. This is just-- so, thank y'all for all your hard work in putting this together and working out the bugs this evening. Everything looks fantastic. The last thing I wanted to just say was just our board members here, I want to thank everyone just for their commitment to this service. And you don't just stop with serving this district. You serve our community. You're serving us at the state level. And the ones up here shies away from those opportunities. And so, Ms. Dixon, you got your Master Trustee Certification, so congratulations on that. And so, we just look forward to what's coming next. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I'll go along with Angela, laid out all those congratulations. There's so many of them. That's so great that we have so many students and employees that are achieving at those levels. It's just very encouraging and also heartwarming to see. So, I appreciate it and also add my congratulations to that. And yes, the boardroom looks great, but I guess, Mr. Correa, the one thing we still haven't gotten to yet, right, is that's the HVAC, because it is still freaking cold in there. So, I'd appreciate it. I got a jacket to throw on, too, but I mean, anyway, but it does look great. But I hope maybe we can tweak that up a little bit. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham?
No comment, Madam President.
Ms. Toomey?
So, the difficulty when it comes to HVAC is there's some of-- there's some of us that are actually-- this is perfect. So, maybe between Scarfo and I, we can come to an arrangement. A little space heater. So, yeah, I just want to say congratulations to all of our state champions. Tiana and Jacob. Tiana had a killer pair of shoes on today. I don't know if anybody noticed when she came up. So, she's obviously skilled in multiple areas. Jacob, I've actually followed his track career through social media over the last couple of years, and I look forward to seeing what he can do in Switzerland at the Worlds. Our state solo and ensemble finalists, they wonder-- they are under wonderful direction of Mr. Cato. I've got nothing but great things to say about him, and congratulations to all of those students. Our Transportation Department with Javon and Ben. I just want to know what the competition looks like. Like, what they're actually doing to show-- to demonstrate their skills. And then, also, congratulations to Francesca and Joe on being wonderful, wonderful teachers. I was very touched by Joe's-- you know, it's more risky to not take risks. He seemed to have great vision, and Francesca really seemed to have a great connection with her students, which is so important. And last, because I don't want to take up too much time, I personally want to thank Dustin and the administration team. Today, I registered my students through the Power School, the annual update, and it was smooth. It was wonderful. It was so much nicer of an experience than we've had in the past. And I just wanted to say thank you for getting that done for us. So, hopefully, other parents will have the same experience that I did. But it was so nice. I have multiple children. Having it being-- you know, pull in the multiple children in that, it was good. So, thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
Well, first, I would like to also ditto, because I had to register my students as my kids as well. And it was smooth. I didn't have to duplicate. It said, "Okay, do you want the same information for kid number two?" Yes, this is great. So, thank you for that. There are so many congratulations. I would like to also kind of ditto the things that Angela-- Ms. Conrad shared earlier. The summer school graduates last night, that was really special. I know for a lot of those students, it takes a lot to get to that point. So, it was nice to see them cross the stage. The updated boardroom, this is really nice. I kind of-- we saw a prototype a little while back in building and planning, but this is beyond what I expected. It's very nice. Thank you very much for that. Congratulations to all of our state champions, from orchestra to track, and also our Teachers of the Year. But would also-- I would also like to recognize Mr. Panayis on the Region Four. He's in the running, so we'll know in August. That's really remarkable. Congratulations to both of them. And I'd also like to thank the Athletics Department for our great new shirts. I love them. Thank you very much. That's it.
Mr. Sitten?
I'm not going to say I'll be brief, because I'm never brief whenever I say I'm going to be brief. But, you know, we talk a lot up here about expecting excellence in everything that we do. And we also talk a lot about that you can't measure student success based on a test. What we saw tonight is not just about student success. It's about school district success, the Transportation Department, the orchestra, the athletics, our Teachers of the Year. You know, we are becoming a beacon on the hill, if you will, for education. And Dr. Fagan, just a short time ago, this is what we talked about. We wanted to be that school district that people looked at. What are they doing? We want some of what they've got. And I attribute a lot of that culture change and where we're at today to you. And I want to thank you for your perseverance and helping us get where-- yeah, we all wanted it done yesterday, and we pushed, and you would get us to back off a little bit. But we're on track to be where we want to be, and I want to thank you for that. Also, they're not here tonight, but Joyner Architects were given the Outstanding Project Award through Learning by Design Magazine for their work on Westlake Middle School. If you haven't seen Westlake, you need to go by and look at it and walk the halls and the new innovative way to teach that that building is bringing. And we're also utilizing that same concept with the design of the new facilities. Lakeland Elementary's rebuild, Elementary 29, the future Elementary 30 in Fall Creek is going to be very similar as far as the idea of that open concept of learning and the Kingwood Middle School rebuild. So, I would recommend you get by there. And I would be remiss, and I'll finish up with this, Madam President. I see Norman Funderburke in the audience, our great friend from the city of Umbel. Little bittersweet this week. I was out of town, and when I got the word that Umbel City Council member Glenn Redman passed away a week ago. The funeral was just this past week. Glenn and Carla Redman have been fixtures in this community for decades. I believe it was 32 years ago that they started the Special Kids Day at the Umbel Rodeo. I believe-- I might get the numbers wrong. It was school bus after school bus after school bus that showed up this year with students with special needs from all around the district. To get that experience and teaching those leadership skills with our FFA students and working with those kids with special needs and allowing them to interact with the animals, that was just a very small part of what the Redman family has meant to this community. Glenn graduated from Umbel High School. He ran for school board, I believe, around 2009, I believe, if I'm not-- '08, 2008, and was recently elected to the Umbel City Council. One thing that most people didn't know, as we went through the funeral, and they estimated at the viewing, over 1,500 people came-- showed up to pay their respects to the family and to honor Glenn Redman's-- just his whole life. The Redman family is-- well, Glenn will be missed. Let me just leave it at that. And we appreciate everything they've done for this community. He was a business owner in this community, gave back, never asked for anything in return. And he was a very, very big supporter of UMBLISD and everything that we do and what we stand for. So, you know, you can't say enough about it. And I'll stop there, because I'll ramble on forever. But Norman, send the city of Umbel our sympathies and thank you for being here and always supporting us as well.
Well, I want to thank you for mentioning the Redmans, because I can remember being at Pine Forest some 32 years ago when they started it. And I'm not going to go, because they were very, very-- he was just extremely special and extremely special to Umbel. I want to ditto everything that everybody has said, because needless to say, we have-- and I'm going to phrase Mr. Sitten-- we just continue to go from-- we've left good to great every day and even greater. So, that is all I have to say tonight. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to the HR Department. This time of year, you know, we're trying a new calendar out, you may know. And we are going to learn a lot this year from that experience. But one of the things that we have done is we've had to compact our maintenance schedule and our construction schedule of things that we normally do over the summer. Congratulations to Facility Sources, and I see them back in the back of the room. They were the contractors on the boardroom. We gave them four weeks from meeting to meeting with absolutely no leeway there. And as you can see, they achieved that. So, congratulations to you all for that also. But in HR, every summer, you know, education-- there's a rhythm of education where you have all of your changes and employee turnover basically at once. And so, over the summertime, HR hires the bulk of the people that they will hire in a given year. And Rick Gardner and his team have hired over 600 people during our compacted summer and have brought incredible team of folks. I got to tell you, the pool of people that I have interviewed and that have joined the UMBLISD family are fantastic. And we are headed for another phenomenal year in our school district. Our family continues to grow and improve. We attract people who want to be more like us and who make us better. And that is a testament to the work in HR. It's a testament to every one of our campuses and the kinds of places that they are. Our projected growth is, again, above expectations, because people want their children here, people want to work here. And that is the collective efforts of everyone in this room and well beyond. So, congratulations, Rick, and your team for the hard work. I know that you guys work really hard behind the scenes. Nolan and your team, same thing, really hard behind the scenes to get all of these things done during the summer so that we can start school on that very first day with buildings fully operational and air-conditioned, fully staffed and ready to go. Congratulations, Rick, on having 100% hiring in transportation done. That's kind of a miracle in education. And so, we're just really excited about where we're headed this year and wanted-- you know, it's funny, I walk through Starbucks and people say, "Oh, do you have the summers off?" And we don't have the summers off. And we do a lot of heavy lifting during the summer, because, you know, you have to close a year and you have to open a year, and you have about six weeks to do it. And this team is doing that so, so very well. So, thank you, everything you're doing.
Okay. Updating on our board associations and committees. Mr. Cunningham? Mr. Cunningham, the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The Audit Committee is looking to meet here in August. We'll be looking at our scope of work for the rest of the year. Mr. Shawn is getting with superintendent, and so, we will send out a meeting notice here in the next week or so.
Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Ms. Conrad.
So, our first meeting is immediately following tonight's board-- regular board meeting. So, I don't really have a report, but I did want to just-- you should be probably getting some invitations for meetings throughout the year. Karen doesn't know this yet. So, try to be responsive to those, because we'll be trying to secure dates where we're all available for our evaluation, our team building, superintendent evaluation, and so forth. So, we'll try to secure those-- get those dates proposed tonight and send those out to y'all soon after. And then, we'll have a full report for you next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Sitten, Building and Planning Committee.
Yeah, you should have all received the minutes from our last meeting and some of the things that were discussed there. We were going to have a couple of conversations tonight. We-- Dr. Fagan and her team have decided to put that off until the August meeting so that we can get a little more information and be a little bit further along instead of piecemealing with this month and next month. Let's see. You're also going to see a couple of things on as agenda items tonight. I had a couple of questions, so I'm not sure if they're going to get pulled or not. But be more than happy to answer any of those questions. And Mr. Correa is here as well, you know, when those items come up.
Okay. Finance Committee, we met, and I hope all of you received your information. Mr. Seal sent it out for us on what we discussed during the meeting, and he's here if you've got any questions. And we also talked about having a presentation come to the board on the-- from the TSA consultants. Advocacy Committee, Ms. Dixon?
Yes. We are looking to meet in August. I've already met with Dr. Fagan and threw around some ideas. I think it'll be exciting, you know, our vision for the upcoming school year.
Thank you. Good. Mr. Scarfo-- Scarfo-- forgive me, I'm all tongue-tied tonight. Educational Foundation?
Nothing to report, Madam President.
Ms. Toomey, Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council?
Nothing to report this month.
Ms. Conrad?
Want to give me a mic? Madam President, I move to approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? 4B?
Madam President, as to student expulsions, I move to approve the administration's recommendations of student-- no, we just did that one. Sorry, I clicked on the wrong one. All right. I'll move to approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? Now, we go to the consent agenda. 5A, approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on Tuesday, June the 4th, 2019. I have a motion. Oh, this is consent. Forgive me. I'm learning. Okay. 5B, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019.
Madam President, I'm sorry. On that one prior that I didn't realize, as you did, that's a consent. I can't-- I have to abstain on that one, so-- because I wasn't here.
We need to pull it.
That was my birthday.
We need to--
That's what I'm saying.
That's right.
I didn't say to pull it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
We need to pull 4B. 4A, I'm sorry. 4A, thank you. Okay. So, 4A is pulled. 4B, the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, June 11th. 5C, approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on Tuesday, June 18th. 4D, goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate are $25,000 individually. Pull? Pull 4D. 5D, I'm sorry, 5D. 5E-- okay. That's okay. Hey, we're learning. Okay. 5D is not a pull. Okay. 5E, construction and construction-related purchases. Okay. 5E is pulled. 5F, budget transfers and amendments. Consent. 5G, tax refunds. Consent. 5H, FEMA claims consulting services contract renewal. Pull? 5H is pulled. 5I, approval of the selection of additional educational consultants. Consent. 5J, approval of the selection of vendors to provide awards and promotional items. Consent. 5K, approval of the selection of vendors to provide miscellaneous instructional materials. Consent. 5L, approval of the selection of vendors to provide custom apparel and accessories. Consent. 5M, approval of the selection of vendors to provide athletic and PE equipment and supplies. Consent. N, approval of the selection of vendors to provide restaurant and catering. N, approval of the selection of vendors to provide restaurant and catering services. Consent. 5O, approval of a selection of vendors to provide general merchandise. Consent. 5P, consideration of architect selection for the tennis court lighting. Pull. 5P is pulled. 5Q, change order number one, elementary number 29, construction.
Do you pull that, please?
Pulled. R, foreign exchange student waiver.
Do you pull that?
Pull. 5S, 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct. Consent. 5T, board authorization for inter-local agreements. Consent. 5U, resolution to elect the Harris County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Consent.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items B, C, D, F, G, I through O, S through V, S through U, as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Okay, now we need to go back to.
A.
A? Okay.
Motion.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second. They're quick. All those in.
Discussion?
Discussion? Okay, just abstain. You just need to abstain. Mr. Scarfo abstain. Oh, two. No, he was, she was there.
So just he's abstaining.
Yeah, so, so you weren't supporting it yet. That's right.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to vote to approve and then abstention.
Okay. All those in favor? All those abstaining? Okay. Now, are we, is B, E? 5E, construction and construction-related purchases. Purchases.
I'll second.
We need a motion.
Motion, please.
So moved?
Second.
And we have a second.
I just wanted, I was just curious if the scope of the track resurfacing had expanded, if that was the reason for the increase from 500,000 to a million?
It was the, it was the addition of that and then just adding the two schools that we added to it, which is Wood Creek and Riverwood.
So Wood Creek and Riverwood got added to the original one? Okay.
That was it, that was my only question.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any more discussion?
Yeah, real quick. So Coach Kite, the, the way I understand it on the Wood Creek, I think we, several of us have gotten messages from patrons in that area. Huh? Yes, so, so the way I understand it, y'all, it, it got delayed because there needed to be some soil samples and things like that to make sure that when we redo it, that we're not going to have the same issue down the line. Okay. All right, that was it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Okay.
Item H?
Item H. 5H.
Moved to approve the renewal contract with Disaster Recovery Services to provide FEMA claims consulting services.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, that was me, Madam President. Just need a little bit of clarification. I was kind of looking back at our initial agreement was back in November 17. It was a four-year agreement, so I guess I'm wondering, why are we, why do we have to do a renewal prior to the agreement? And then also, I just, looking at the history of it, where do we fall within those initial estimates of the amount, the dollar amount and the billable hours and our projections going forward?
So the, the very nature of the contract is that it's a projection of how quickly we can move with FEMA, or I should say, how quickly we can get FEMA to move. We will have by the end of this month, have expended all of the funds covered by the initial contract. The initial contract projected that we would spend through this, I guess I would say this, the initial contract was designed, designed to cover, I believe, 18,000 hours to date. We have done 18,400, about 18,450 hours. So that face the contract, we're, we're out of funds. We have proposed a one-year extension. We came to the board a few months ago and had them approved as a vendor for an additional million-two for this next year. They're projecting that when we finish this year, this coming year, that there will be another million dollars worth of work to do. I remind the board that about the first three and a half million dollars worth of those expenses were covered by insurance. The rest is reimbursable by FEMA at 90%.
I remember that. Also, when it came to the board for the last revised total amount, that was an annual amount? 4,950?
4,950 is the grand total of all of the funds from day one.
From the beginning of the contract.
From the beginning of the contract, that's correct.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot more sense. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Dr. Fagan, I'm just looking over here at the pricing and the payments. And so we're being asked to approve 2.1 million. But the contract, or we're only working for the fiscal year, for one year, for 1.2 million?
Let me make a correction. They're projecting that just the long-term for this will be a cost of 2.2 million dollars. We are only committing to one year, to 1.2 million. We'll come back to the board at the end of the year and we will bring you an update, bring the finance committee an update, and we'll ask you if you want to proceed for the next year.
Okay, and if I understood you right, Mrs. Seal, you said we're probably looking at another million. So with this 1.2, that still leaves about 900,000. I just want to make sure that I was looking at this right on the pricing.
It is, it is a projection that the total from this point, from this, the start of this next month forward will be 2.2 million dollars spread over a two-year period.
Okay.
And that is for both, both their fees and for expenses. Our expenses are fairly high under this contract because we have, one of our specialists lives in Connecticut. He's a guy that was a FEMA representative for many years and is one of the best people we deal with. But we have a lot of travel expenses right now. We, actually, it's more cost-effective to have an apartment for them here. We believe in about two months, we'll be able to brachet that back and save ourselves a little bit. But too late to give you a short answer to your short question, but it is 2.2 million dollars over the next two years, but we are only committing to 1.2 million dollars, or asking the board to do that at this time.
Okay, and that's good. And, and then on this last bullet under the pricing and payment, it, it does say not to exceed, but shall not authorize, it says, incur without prior written approval from an authorized representative or client. I'm hoping that means the board will approve.
It does.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, and I believe we go to 5P. Is that correct? Consideration of architect selection of the tennis court lighting. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second? Okay.
That was me just having a question about having to have an architect for 50,000 or more to do tennis court lighting? So I'm just confused, were they existing already? Is this new lighting?
It is not. It is new tennis court lighting that we're looking to put out at our schools. And so it's the amount of work that is needing that and the fact that we're putting up new poles and things at those areas for the tennis courts.
New electrical?
Yeah, everything.
So that requires an architect because?
An engineer for the electrical and the amount of work that it's costing the, you know, just all of the certification that we would need to put them in. Believe me, when Troy and I worked together quite a bit on these. Yes, I was going to say, we, we, we try as much as we can to get away as.
I should know that.
As little as we can, so, but this required it.
So yeah, it's my understanding that Tassie State High School is the only school that had lighting and now we're putting lighting at all the high schools.
That's correct.
So it's not a matter of just replacing the lights, it's, it's doing all the engineering work and electrical work to, to get them up.
To light all of them.
Well, and in the counter, Stephanie worked with, with Troy on the replacement of the lights on the football field, which did not require an architect because they were existing. It was just replacing the lights, making them better so that the field was completely safe. But these are non-existing lights.
Is this fall as a, is this one of the P1?
It is, it's P2.1.
So the tennis court lighting, does Umbel High School have lighting currently?
They do not, but they will.
Ending board approval.
Only one of the five.
Only at Tassie State High School has tennis court lights.
But they're not listed here.
Oh.
Good point.
Just checking.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? And I believe now we go to 5.
Q.
Q? I need a motion. Move?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have.
Just, I wanted some clarification. How, why wouldn't that, this have popped up during the, we do the soil testings initially when you're doing the project, you know, you can scope it out and bid it out. How come something like this wouldn't have, have come to light in the, in that process that, you know, for the geo study? And I'm no.
No, absolutely.
Geoengineer or anything, but it just, it just smacks at me like, why do those guys know that before, and now after the fact? And the other thing is, now you're kind of at the mercy of, there's no bidding on this. It's, they're just like getting, you got to do it. That's, that's all, I just kind of wanted to understand. And maybe I'm totally misguided in that thought that it should have happened.
Absolutely. So basically, that, they, they, when they do the soil test, they give us basic numbers and measurements on the compaction that that area will have to have in order to support that building. As we went in and started to fill in that area to make sure that we had the right, we could not achieve the compaction needed in order to build elementary 21, or excuse me, 29 on that site. So as we continued to test that compaction, what we found is in one area, we were needing to either remove the soil or add ash and lime to it, which we've already added quite a bit just to get the compaction to where we at, would have not allowed us to have landscaping on the site. So in order to achieve the, the compaction, what we need to do is bring in more filled dirt, add lift, so that we can dry it out and continue on our schedule.
Yeah, no, I understand, and, and yeah, you have to do what we need to do to do it. But is there any way of going back to the firm, the engineering firm who did the initial testing that, because you were under the impression that, we're good to go, here's what we need to do, and then boom, you know what? That wasn't what we needed to do.
Right.
There's no recourse to.
If we went back to the company who did this and, and asked them the same thing and, and the problem is still the same, they can't, they don't know exactly what it's going to take to compact the soil until we actually start doing it. And the fact that it's sit there for so many years wet because of all the elevations that were lifted around this piece of property, all the water ran to that area. That's one of the reasons why we had to lift it four feet in order to get it up and above the surrounding neighborhoods. And then when we started to compact it, we just couldn't achieve it fast enough.
All right, well, thank you.
So from what I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that as a district, we were originally going to do this piece of drying and remediation ourselves. And we, since we could not achieve it ourselves, we are now going through them and adding that as an additional scope to their project. It wasn't them originally that were supposed to do this.
That is correct. Initially, we were going to do this, but the timeframe didn't fall in when we were going to get them started. The actual contractors right now, Gamma, that's on site. So we decided just to wait for Gamma to do it. And so we're using this, that money that was there in order to supplement this contract to get it in.
So it's, it's really, it's not like it's a full additional 155,000 that was unexpected. Some of it is, some of it we kind of already expected to spend, we're just now spending it with them.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other?
And this, this isn't increasing our overall budget, this is coming out of contingency, correct?
It is coming out of our contingency. It, the reason we're bringing it, it is a change order to Gamma Construction for them. It is increasing their overall cost.
Yeah, and just as a matter of clarification, we knew that the property was, was too low, that it was going to have to be built up. We knew that from the get-go.
Absolutely.
But once we, once we got it built up, then it became a compacting issue with the new dirt coming in.
That is correct. That is correct.
Any other? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Okay. Now I believe 5R. I need a motion?
Second.
Second?
I just had, just a quick question, Dr. Fagan. So the TEA drives that, that decision of how many students you could have at a high school? There's no, there's no, if you say you, I want to have seven at Umbel, at, at Umbel ISD, we want to have seven at each high school, are they saying you can only have five or?
No, we, we are asking for a waiver so that we get to control it to some extent. That's the way I understand the, the waiver process, is that we don't want unlimited numbers because it would, it would imbalance our class sizes.
No, I understand, but now we're, so how did we arrive at, say, five as opposed to seven? And five is enough, I mean, at each one, over the years?
With the companies that we work with, our partners, we feel like five is a, is a reasonable number and it has accommodated in the past our, the request for, for students.
So like with Rotary, when they have their exchange students coming?
We listen to them all and it pretty much comes through my office and I work with our regentors and our principals and, you know, we, we work very closely with the organization. But we found five has been the number that we are comfortable with for every school.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Okay. All right. So we have no action items. Information items.
On those first two, again, we wanted to bring, as the board has had a conversation at Board Building and Planning about a comprehensive plan and then the pieces of that plan. And so we wanted to delay till August so that we can bring you the comprehensive plan as well as these first two pieces with AHS and HHS. So thank you for accommodating that change. I believe we've answered a lot of the handbook questions that have come in. Appreciate those updates and changes. And then the other items on here are sort of first reading items where you will see policy updates. We bring those and then we bring them back, as well as the attendance area for elementary school number 29, where we will be meeting with Boundary Committee again. We had an initial meeting. Attendance in the summer is a bit of a challenge, so we will be bringing them back together, looking at the options and also looking at some additional conversation because of the Timber Forest Bridge Project, which will open up that area in a way that it's not currently open in, in not-too-distant future. So we want to discuss with the Boundary Committee, giving parents who would benefit from that bridge, some options that might be a benefit to them now and then into the future make a lot more sense. So that's where we're headed with that. Financial Services reports are on there every month, and that is the end of the information items. Policy update on next month? Yes. And Roger, boundaries next month? September, okay.
Okay, so consideration of topics for future board business? Okay, so, consideration of topics for future board business?
I have one, if, if you could, if you wouldn't mind, uh, bearing with me. And, and again, let me just start it by saying, what I'm, what I'm gonna, wanna propose is, is not a criticism of, of this board, prior boards, or future, whatever, or anybody here, but, but I wanna, I wanna frame it, it, within, within these words, and let me put my glasses on, I can read, but, you know, we talk about our mission statement, our purpose in, in partnership with families and communities, develop each child intellectually, artistically, emotionally, physically, and socially, so that all students are lifelong learners, and it continues on, and then our vision statement. And, so, within that framework of our mission statement, I'd like to propose that, starting with next month, that we, as a board, devote up to an hour to discuss an education topic. You know, as examples, and they're really limitless. Say, we discuss challenges faced by title, Title One campuses, you know, what initiatives, uh, are there to address those challenges? How do we measure outcomes? What are the milestones? Discussions on special populations, whether it be sped students, gifted and talented students, English language learners, um, you know, goals that we're setting, how we're measuring, uh, to, you know, discuss it, uh, in, in public for, for our stakeholders, you know, and strategies to, uh, graduate students who are truly college and career-ready. We all want to do that. You know, what are the, the best practices that are out there? You know, how, how are they being measured? And, you know, and you look at tonight's agenda as an example, and I went back just looking at the last six, and the discussions are focused on things that support education, and, and there's no question, that's very important. We're talking about buildings, we're talking about, you know, consultants, vendors, all these things, um, but I, I just don't see that on a regular basis, we're, we're really talking about our mission, uh, you know, of, of education, um, and you know what, our, the board and staff having these, having this discussion about a particular topic. And, you know, I gave a couple of examples, but like I said, it lists endless, and what, what I would, my suggestion is that a, a topic is chosen or presented by, by staff to superintendent, and that two to three weeks before the meeting, we let the public know, let the stakeholders know what we're gonna talk about at that meeting, and we could advertise it on the district site through our social media platforms that we use, so that on a particular topic, stakeholders who are interested in that topic, you know, could attend the meeting, voice some comments or concerns they have, and the board would actually be able to, that very evening, uh, address some of those questions because it's an agenda item. Uh, and then, you know, one of the added benefits, we all know what's, you know, it's coming down the road with the Lone Star Governance Training, uh, you know, which really is focusing on, uh, having, uh, boards be looking at outcomes and, and really be focused on outcomes. So, uh, that would be, as I said, an added benefit that maybe we get ahead of the, ahead of, ahead of the curve on, on that one. So, that's just something I, I really would like us to consider, and again, like I said, it's not a criticism of, uh, 'cause, you know, I served previously, and, and honestly, I, I don't feel we spent a lot of time doing that, and, and that is, that does our business, is education, and I think, thinking it would be great to, to really devote some time to talk about, you know, topics like that, and I, and like I said, there's a gazillion that I would, we'd be here forever and ever, but there's, I think, always some great topic we can talk about, and, and we talk about, we want people to know that we, we are, you know, moving and have been moving from good to great, and all the achievement, and I think it, it would be great for the public to hear some of what's really going on, because they really don't, uh, get that opportunity, so I just think it would be, uh, very beneficial for us to, to do something like that, along those lines, that, yeah, this is why we're here, and we're gonna, we're gonna spend some time actually talking about a particular topic, uh, and, like I said, I just gave you some examples. So, I, I would like us to consider that, so that's...
Very good consideration. We presently, uh, we began that, uh, several years back, many, I guess, quite a few years back. We have breakfast with the board, and so therefore, specific topics are discussed, uh, curriculum, uh, technology, uh, progress. So, we have one coming up in August, uh, which, um, let me see. September? September, I'm sorry, September, uh, which, uh, are public, and so we have the opportunity to talk to all our departments and discuss all the topics that you're talking about.
Okay, and, but there, those are at seven o'clock in the morning, the breakfast with the boards?
Mm-hmm.
And so, I, I know they're posted, they have to be posted because there's more than three people that show up.
We've had constituents come out.
Well, but, oh, okay, that, that's all, and that's great to do that, too, but, you know, at these monthly meetings that most people, you know, would know about and hear about, I think this is a good place to do that, besides just, you know, a breakfast with the board, uh, which, I, I just don't think you're gonna get the same kind of turnout at seven in the morning that you might at seven PM, uh, if people know that you're gonna talk about a topic. So, I, I, if nobody thinks that's a great idea, or I, I don't mean a great, but a good eye, good, something that we should consider doing, then fine, uh, but I, it's just something I would like to have us consider, that we, that we do that, because that is our business, and I, I think we should spend some, and devote some time to talking publicly and with staff and with the board about what we're doing and, and why we're doing it, and what we're looking to achieve, um, that, that people see that, and people know, and that they could, uh, come and ask questions about it, uh, because I know that's gonna be a topic, agenda topic for that evening, uh, because when we say, hey, you know, we can't address something, but somebody who's interested in a particular topic we're gonna discuss, they could show up that night. So I think, that's great, I, I, I've been to breakfast with the boards, and they're, they're very informative, but like I said, I don't see them being well-attended by the public because of the time that they are, um, so I think, I, I still would like us to, to consider it, and if, uh, the seven of you don't think we should do it, then we don't do it.
Madam President, may I?
It's just something I throw out there, so thank you.
Uh, Ms. Scarfo, I, 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 I do appreciate, uh, what you're saying, and I, and I think, you are seeing what's coming down the pipe. We were asked several months ago to participate in the Lone Star Governance. They sent it to us, we looked at it. Uh, in addition to that, Tasby also has their governance training, XG, and I, I believe I sent to you, uh, Ms. Conrad, because I'm, I also serve on the, uh, TEA School Board Council, so there are some things that we're going to be doing down the future, because we're gonna be required as a board to set annual goals on child literacy, uh, math, career and college readiness, and these are the things that I know that the public is gonna wanna hear, so you're, you're in the right direction, I think, but it's gonna take us at least trying to kind of come together and see, okay, what's, what's gonna be first? And so I, I totally agree with you, because it's coming. Uh, TEA is requesting now that a board meeting has some type of, what are we doing for student outcomes?
Yeah, exactly.
And so, and so, so, I'm, I'm with you on that, but I think as a board, we're gonna have to kind of come together, and how does that work with, how does that fit with us? And where do we go from here? And of course, it's gonna take the superintendent...
Sure.
Kind of crafting that, so I, I'm, I'm on point with you, and, uh...
Okay.
And it's gonna happen.
Okay.
Madam President, um, I was gonna propose that, oh, I'm supposed to talk at this one. I was gonna propose that, and why aren't the lights turning purple when I talk? I was gonna propose that, um, the, the evaluation committee kind of worked through this, we've talked about really, uh, working more and refining our superintendent evaluation tool, and kind of identifying what those indicators are that help us measure, um, and so perhaps out of that discussion, um, and with the administration's recommendation of, of, of when that data comes out throughout the year, uh, we're, perhaps can come up with a calendar of where that could be presented as an information item that could then be discussed, right? So, so let's say AP results just came out in July, perhaps they wanna share that with us in August as an information item, and we could talk about the higher ed, whatever. But I would propose that maybe that comes out of that evaluation committee and work with the superintendent to kind of come up with that calendar that doesn't really cause extra work on the administration, but that's, that's data that's rolling out throughout the year anyway, and that gives us a, a calendar of what to expect, um, to go on information items. That's, that's just my opinion.
Okay, I mean, I mean...
So I, I agree.
Yeah, Madam President, while I appreciate the dialogue, uh, per Robert's Rules of Order, it, consideration for future board business, this was not on the agenda, so really, we shouldn't be discussing it back and forth, but point well-taken that something to consider, uh, as a group.
Thank you. Alright, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.